Good morning, everybody. This is Kirsten Van Rij, Chief of Staff for the Nevada's Treasurer's Office. Treasurer Konine is stuck in traffic right now. It sounds like there's a big accident on the freeway. So I'm going to go ahead and get the meeting kicked off if that works for everybody. And it is 10:02, so we'll go ahead and call the College Savings Board of Trustees for the Savings Plans of Nevada, December 18, 2024, meeting to order. And we'll start by calling the roll. Treasurer Konine is absent excuse for the moment. Member Vales.
Here.
Thank you. Member Cano Burkhead?
Here.
Member Rankin?
Here.
Member Vitan standing in for Member Hager as the entry representative?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and I'd also like to shout out Deputy Attorney Nicole Ting, who should also be on the line.
Hi, yes.
All right, moving on to the first stage of public comment comes from the public are invited at this time. Is there any public comment on the line? All right, any members of the public in Carson City? And it does not appear that there are any members of the public in this room down in southern Nevada. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Do any of the board members wish to pull any of the items from the consent agenda for this meeting?
Hi, Kirsten, this is Nicole Ting from the AG's office. Can you, just for the record, Chair Konine has designated you to service his duties until he is available?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, thank you.
Great, just wanted to make it official. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, back to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda items three through seven?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number eight for discussion, presentation by Makita regarding Nevada 529 College Savings Programs, Alternate Monitoring Framework, and I will turn it over to Kay from Makita.
Great. Would you like me to share my screen?
Um, yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure. Okay, let me get that up. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And everybody can hear me okay? I have to zoom? All right, well, well, thank you and good morning, everyone. So we have this document here today, and the catalyst for this conversation is that we were in the process and are still in the process of reviewing and updating your governing documents, which include two different things, your investment policy statement and your monitoring procedures. And while this document really pertains to the methodologies and criteria that flow into your monitoring procedures, we will do a brief recap of the investment policy statement and monitoring procedures at a high level of what those are and why you have them. So just so some more background, so over the last year or so, Makita has conducted some analysis and research on what should go into your monitoring procedures. And so the most of, or the bulk of this document really reflects on and shares the, what we learned from that analysis. So if we turn to the next page, page 90, if you're following along, this just highlights what goes into an investment policy statement. And at a high level, you know, it's the most important document that you have. It spells out your governing principles for the program, and it helps you make decisions and tells you how and what decisions are made. And it includes several key things that we think are important, just to point out. It defines your roles and responsibilities, who does what. It provides the program objectives, and it also sets out the monitoring procedures in terms of how the underlying funds are monitored. And you have a separate document that covers that in your monitoring procedures, but in some cases that can also be folded into this, into your investment policy statement, excuse me. So if we look at the next page here, this page shows you what the underlying principles are for your monitoring process. And there's really just a couple of things to note on this page. First is the process that you have in place today meets all of these things, although we think there's probably a little bit of room for improvement. But as a reminder, there should be objectivity in the way that the underlying strategies are monitored. You should be balancing the short-term issues that come up with the plan by considering also the long-term objectives of the plan overall, as well as the strategy. And that the process, well, it's a fluid process, meaning that we're doing it all the time. We're looking at these funds on a regular basis, that the process itself is systematic and documented, so that you have on record, you know, how you're doing it, you know, how frequently you're reviewing things, and there are certain parameters that would place a fund on watch. And that the process should include both qualitative and quantitative aspects, and that you need to understand the role of the fund in the program while you're looking at these qualitative and quantitative aspects, and that there should be a clear time period of review. And please interrupt me if I'm rambling on and you have a question. On the next page here, we just lay out what our goal was when we were thinking about our research in terms of the project of reviewing what we do today. So the process we have in place right now has been in place for a while. While there's been minor tweaks over the years, we did want to take a fresh look and just see what else is out there in terms of different methodologies or ways of evaluating funds to ensure that we were following best practices. So we went out and reviewed the published research that we could find and looked at not only for actively managed funds, but also passively managed funds. And our analysis focused mainly on the factors or what we're looking at to evaluate the funds, and as well as the methodology of how the overall status of a fund is assigned by using that data that we use from the factors or the elements. And what we found is that, you know, there's no silver bullet in terms of, there's nothing like from the CFA Institute that tells us, here's the best way to do it. So, and I'll get to that in a minute, but just as a reminder of how we do it today, so this page highlights the processes that we follow. On the left-hand side of the page, we have what we do for actively managed funds. And then on the right-hand side, we show you what we do for passively managed funds. So as a reminder, the actively managed funds, we're looking at performance versus your benchmarks over one- and three-year periods, and we're looking at rolling periods. And if a fund underperforms its benchmark by a certain performance threshold, which is established by asset class for six or more months, then it qualifies for watch, as well as qualitative or non-performance issues, such as team changes, legal regulatory type issues. And then on the right-hand side, we show you the passive funds. So we look, we're still looking at the same criteria for the non-performance factors, but for the quantitative, we're looking at tracking error, which looks at how closely a fund is aligning with its index over time. And again, we're looking at rolling one- and three-year periods. And then we're also looking at relative performance over the five-year period. And then on the bottom, we have, down here, you can hardly read it probably, we have how we go about assigning the status of each fund. And this is where things get a little bit murky, I think probably from the board level, because it's a little bit confusing on how we do it. And I'll describe it, and if it doesn't make sense, you can tell me, and I'll try a different way. But it is a little confusing. So like I said earlier, we're looking at short and medium-term performance versus the benchmark over the rolling one- and three-year periods. So short is the one-year period, medium is the three-year period, and we're looking at it monthly. So if we just focus on the last quarter, there's three periods in the quarter, and there's a performance threshold. So if a fund has a positive rating in the first month, and then acceptable the second month, and acceptable the third month, it's still going to have a positive rating for the short term over that one period. And then we do the same thing for the medium term, and then we take the worst rating of the two. So if the short was positive and the medium was caution, then that fund would be placed on caution. So it's just a little confusing in terms of how that actually happens, and probably hard for you to audit and reconcile when we're talking about it on a monthly basis. So that's what we do today. On the next page, we just go a little bit deeper on what those two buckets or components are, the quantitative side and the qualitative side. I think the main takeaway here is the process from a quantitative standpoint is really formulaic. So you either pass or you fail, but what we're trying to do is seek understanding. So funds do underperform, all funds underperform over time. So we want to know why. Is it the style of the fund? You know, growth versus value is a great example of that. Understand if it's a benchmark or peer group mismatch. Sometimes funds have a very broad benchmark, but maybe they're doing something that's more targeted. So on the quantitative side, that's what we're looking at. On the qualitative side, we're looking at those non-performance issues, and we want to make sure if there has been a change with the people or the team, the organization, or some legal issue, we want to understand the implications of that event. Is it positive or negative? Is it a distraction? Is it going to change the team or the firm culture? So those are the things we're looking at. A fund can be placed on watch for either or both of these types of factors, and we have had funds placed on watch for both of them over the years. So after going through our due diligence and what's published out there, what we found is that the monitoring procedures should have both the quantitative and qualitative aspects. They should, on the quantitative side, you should be looking at performance, not just against an index such as like the S&amp;P 500. You should also be looking at it versus its peer group. And that, again, there was no consensus on how you should actually go about or what factors you should be used on the quantitative side. And then there was also quite a bit of literature talking about needing to strike a balance between having this criteria, right? It's called a watch list. Some boards will have these types of policies in place, and the immediate action or want is to terminate a fund because it's been placed on watch. And that's not what this is for. It's to identify funds that have underperformed, seek understanding, and recognize that there will be funds in times that funds underperform for quarters, or in some case, several years, just based on their investment style. So having taken all that into consideration, just more broadly speaking, not just to Nevada, but more broadly speaking, what we found in our current methodology is that the way we go about assigning that status at the very end is confusing. So we think adding simplicity to that would be worthwhile. And that for you guys, you don't have that peer component, so we think that's something that should be incorporated. And right now, we have these performance thresholds that are set up by asset class, and those allow funds to slip through the cracks, if you will, just because it might be hanging out in that acceptable range for a long period of time, and then we wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily trip up that watch criteria trigger. So we think by eliminating or changing that threshold to zero would make sense. So if we look at the next page, and this, on this page, we focus a little bit more on your plan. Again, some of this is redundant, but I think the main takeaway here is the peer relative component. That's not part of your monitoring procedures now, so that's something we think you should add. And then another thing that we think is worth discussing and possibly changing in the way we go about things right now, we have, we use that tracking error to monitor passively managed funds. What ends up happening, the only funds that trip up that the tracking error criteria typically are either international equity or fixed income funds. And it's always because of some sort of operational issue, either fair value pricing or some tax thing that's happening in another country. And then on the fixed income side, it's usually because of the way the funds are put together, where they don't buy every security, they just try to replicate the characteristics because there's so many bonds out there in the universe. So in our opinion, we think it's worthy of consideration to maybe to move to something that's a little bit more different, includes a few more aspects, and that's on this next page. And this has a lot of data on it, so I'll go through it quickly. And I think this bottom here really shows it to you in the way maybe you're used to seeing it. But this table shows you your current criteria, although it's kind of collapsed for all the different asset classes. So right now, you have the three criteria that you look at. This is for actively managed funds. We're proposing that you go to four, and I'll describe those in a minute. In the middle here, you have your thresholds that are being used to monitor performance. We're recommending those all go away and it becomes zero. And then we say how many, the time periods, earlier I mentioned that funds are monitored over six-month periods before it would fail. Now we're saying, let's extend that to nine, give funds a little bit more runway, given that we're making the threshold zero. And then we're adding that peer group, and we're having that be 12 months, given the volatility and the range of outcomes of peer groups. And that we go away from this positive acceptable caution and/or watch rating naming and go to pass or fail. And it might make sense to look at the next page, because I think it has, let me talk about this one first. So and then on the passive side, we're saying, right now, you look at tracking error. So there's two criteria. It's the tracking error over the short and medium term. And then we do look at performance over the long term relative to the benchmark, and there's a threshold of underperformance. We're recommending getting rid of all of that. We'll still look at performance to see if it's in line with the benchmarks. But it wouldn't be this very rigid thing. It would be something that would be a little bit more fluid, and you would have a little bit more opportunity to allow funds to underperform and not place them on watch like we do today. We're still going to look at all of the qualitative factors that we look at and have looked at over the years. And then the overall criteria, you would get a fail if you failed any of these things. Generally, it will probably be more along the lines of the qualitative for the passive funds. So I'll talk a little bit about the outcome, and this is what it would look like going forward in your report. It's called, we presented it as a scorecard, and we look at four different factors. It's still short and medium term. You see the two short criteria here. One is based on return, and the others versus the peer universe or peer rank. And you pass if you're above the, above zero or below zero for nine months or less. You would pass for the performance, and then for the peer ranking, it's 12 months. You have to be above median. So what we found is that most of, well, not most, all of the funds that qualify for watch today continue to qualify. So the Vanguard Fund still qualifies. You can see here it fails both the medium-term performance versus the benchmark, as well as the peer group. And then there's three funds in the Putnam Program. Now, this is a little bit of nuance, just because we know this program's going away. But there are two, it does provide a good example. There's two additional funds. And I think one that's worthwhile looking at is the Putnam Fund, because it's one that's been hanging out in that acceptable range for a while, but hasn't triggered watch. And this is really tiny, but hopefully you can see it well enough. It had, this is how we look at the performance today, using the monitoring criteria. It has the rolling 12-month performance. Everything yellow here is in the acceptable range for performance. The 12-month, rolling 36-month, and then we have the long-term up here. And then on this side is the new criteria. Anything red means you're below the criteria. So you can see it's been hanging out below the benchmark for a long time, and it just hasn't qualified for watch. So this new criteria would pick this up. So our recommendation is that we suggest that while we continue our process to evaluate your governing documents, that you would consider shifting to this process, which would incorporate just a more complete picture in our view of how the funds are doing by incorporating the peer ranks, as well as eliminate talking about things that, you know, maybe aren't necessary, such as some of the passive funds. And I will stop talking to see if there's any questions.
Hi, this is Zach Konine and Attorney General Ting. I will be taking over control of this meeting. Appears to be a bloodless coup. That's great. Any questions for Kay or Makita at this stage? From board members? Okay, I appreciate y'all getting started. All right. Kay, anything else you wanted to add there?
No, I was just going to say thank you, and we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Without close agenda item number eight, quick mention. Appreciate y'all getting started while I visited the Nevada State Flower, the traffic tone. And we'll move on to agenda item number nine for discussion and possible action. The Nevada Prepaid Tuition Investment Monitoring Report, prepared by Makita Investment Group for the quarter ended September 30th, 2024.
Great, and Ison, oh, I was just going to say Ison's going to cover that one. Sorry.
No problem. Good morning, all. I'm Ison Kilik with Makita Investment Group, and I will be covering the Nevada Prepaid Tuition Plan Quarter Report for the third quarter of 2024. Would you like me to also share my screen without help?
I think that would be great.
Okay, let me just quickly try that, make sure it comes across properly. Can you see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so again, I'm Ison Kilik, and I'll be presenting the prepaid quarterly report. I'd like to start with page 108, which is a snapshot of economic indicators. We like looking at this because it helps us help gauge the stage of the economy, the health of the economy, and make predictions about the market movements. The key takeaway from this page is that US economy remains strong with no signs of any major slowdown going into 2025. On the top left, you can see the real GDP continues to be a positive number. And then both US unemployment and US inflation are well below their pandemic highs. And the US yield curve, which helps us look at the yields of the shorter-term maturities versus long-term, in this case, we pay attention the most, is a 10-year versus two-year, has normalized. So overall, again, healthy, pretty remarkably resilient economy. And some of the key things to watch going forward will include the monetary policy, geopolitical concerns, any differences, changes in US unemployment and US inflation, and also the, any potential changes, what the new administration will do. Unless any questions for the macroeconomic indicators, I'd like to spend a few minutes also on market updates. Global markets rallied in the third quarter with positive returns across major indices, single-digit to double-digit returns. We also see strong results for one, five, and 10 years. Very strong, good numbers, positive numbers for the quarter specifically. Emerging markets outperformed non-US developed, which in turn outperformed domestic equities. Within the equities, value was a strong performer, stronger than growth, and small caps outpaced large caps. And within the fixed income world, emerging market debt was the strongest performer, followed by US credit, and then the US core fixed income. But again, positive, nice numbers throughout many of the indices for the quarter and many investment periods. With that, I would like to look at the plan specifically. The Nevada Prepaid Tuition Plan portfolio continues to grow with an aggregate value of 464.8 million as of September 30th, 2024. That was an increase in value by 23.8 million. And in terms of asset allocation trends, I will visit that in a later page. But for the performance component, which is the lower part of the page, you can see that we, here, you can see the performance for various investment periods. We monitor short term but focus on the long term. For the short term, for the quarter, the plan, the total portfolio, underperformed its policy benchmark, but outperformed its peer group. And for the one, three, and five years, the total portfolio outperformed both its policy benchmark and its peer median group. And lastly, with the assumed rate of return being 5.25% for Nevada Prepaid Tuition Plan, the plan outperformed this number for the quarter, for the six years, and then five years, for three years and the five years. So a very good place to be overall in terms of performance. Unless any questions, what I would like to review next is page 112. In terms of underlying components for this portfolio are highlighted on this page, with public equity is being passive, and the performance of the passive underlying funds being in line with their benchmarks for the long and the short term. And the fixed income is an active, separate account with the manager outperforming its benchmark for various investment periods. And lastly, the covered call is implemented through a mutual fund. This is a downside protection component of the overall portfolio. It's expected to do well, better, when the markets are down. That hasn't happened recently. So it has underperformed, but it has done well in the longer-term investment periods. Unless any question on the performance, I will review the asset allocation component that I mentioned earlier. Next, here we look at the asset allocation versus the targets. And what we see is three of the asset classes out of six are in line with the policy targets. One, cash, is not included in the asset allocation, but we do have allocation due to liquidity needs. And then two that are outside of the investment policy statement ranges are large cap and fixed income, which are just marginal outliers, just small percentages. So mostly in line in terms of what we would expect. This concludes my comments in terms of prepared comments. I'll stop here to take any questions.
Thanks so much. Any questions from board members on agenda item number nine? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion to accept this Nevada Prepaid Tuition Investment Monitoring Report.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much. Let's move on to agenda item number 10. For discussion and for possible action, Nevada 529 Savings Plan Investment Monitoring Report, prepared by Makita Investment Group for the quarter ended September 30th, 2024.
Good morning again. So I am Ison Kilik with Makita again, and I will also review the Nevada 529 College Savings Programs for the third quarter. for the third quarter, and I will again share my screen. Please let me know if you can see my screen.
Looks good.
Perfect. Okay, so I would like to start with page one twenty six. And um for this report, I would like to start by reviewing the summary of fund performance and watch status. Uh, as a reminder, there are five programs within the Nevada five twenty five nine college savings program. So I will be looking at first by each program manager, starting with Vanguard five twenty nine program. Here, uh, eighty seven percent of funds have uh either a positive or acceptable status, which is a good number to have. Uh, one fund has been on watch and continues to qualify for watch, which is a Vanguard US Growth. I will be reviewing this fund in further detail during the watch memo. Uh, other than that, uh, no funds had a status change, either improvement or deterioration. And as previously communicated, in July of this year, uh, Vanguard, um, four funds were removed and four funds were added for the Vanguard platform. Um, moving on to the next programs for the USAA Victory five twenty nine program, ninety two percent of the funds have either a positive or acceptable uh status with no funds on watch, no new funds qualifying for watch. And uh, one fund uh in uh improved during the quarter and one fund deteriorated during the quarter with respect to its status. Uh, but again, no changes to the watch status here. Uh, Putnam five twenty nine program, ninety three percent of the funds in this program have either a positive or acceptable status. Uh, two um fund changes happened, uh, status changes happened uh in terms of two improvements. MFS International Equity and Putnam Income had an improvement to their fund status. No funds deteriorated for the quarter, and one fund that was already on watch continues to qualify for watch, and that is Federated Hermes, a short term government bond fund. For the next two, we have Wealthfront five twenty nine program, where eighty nine percent of the funds have either a positive or acceptable status. Here, no funds were on watch, no new funds qualified for watch, and no funds had a change in their status. Last, JP Morgan five twenty nine program, ninety percent of funds have either a positive or an acceptable status. Uh, no funds are on watch, no new funds qualified for watch. And you had uh two funds improved during the quarter, while while two funds deteriorated during the quarter. Um, this wraps up for the uh uh summary of the fund performance and watch status. Um, unless any questions, I would like to also uh quickly review uh the qualitative components. And as a reminder, we also review the funds for any changes for the qualitative components, including the per- portfolio manager changes. Uh, and for this part, uh, there were two funds um that had portfolio manager departures. And when we followed up, we learned that um in both cases for Victory Market Neutral Income and Putnam Income, uh, in both cases, the portfolio manager uh is in transition out from the team, but remains with the firm and remains a resource to their original team. So we have no concerns here. Um, for the rest of the package, for pages one forty six to one fifty four, there is further performance information for the underlying funds, which we monitor quarterly, and we look at the shorter term versus long term performance. And then pages one fifty five uh through one seventy seven, we also have risk return statistics for the portfolios. Um, and lastly, on page seventy, one seventy nine is the watch memo, sorry, in spite. Nine. Uh, unless any questions until what I would like to do is go through a review of the watch status memo. I'll just take a quick brief uh break here.
Any questions before we move on to the memo? Please carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as a refresher, this is where we review again quarterly the funds in all five programs uh and uh update the watch status. Um, the table here is a good highlight of what we see. Um, currently, out of the five programs, three have no funds on watch, and they also have no funds new qualifying for watch. These are the USAA Victory uh Wealthfront and the JP Morgan Platforms uh programs. And you do have uh one fund for Vanguard, Vanguard US Growth Admiral's Fund that continues to qualify for watch. And with Putnam, the Federated Hermes Short Term International Government Fund that continues to uh qualify for watch. For uh Vanguard, the US Growth Admiral, uh, you may remember that last quarter we had a separate additional uh memo. And uh that was because we had an additional call with the investment team at Vanguard. And then we wanted to provide more perspective into the history of this fund, underlying managers and analysis. And what we did for this memo is we took components of that memo from last quarter, that additional memo, incorporated some of the analysis and the context into this memo that is there for you, uh, if you'd like to uh review any further. But what we're seeing with this fund is that, as a reminder, there's a multi-manager fund that is benchmarked against Russell one thousand growth, which as a benchmark has been a top decile performer. So in the universe, it has outperformed ninety percent of the uh the funds uh for three, five, and ten years. So that's a difficult environment for an active manager to outperform a benchmark. For this fund specifically, it qualifies for watch based on thirty six month rolling performance, the medium term. And uh primarily because if it's underperformance in calendar year twenty twenty two, when all this underlying sub-advisors had a difficult time outperforming the benchmark. For the quarter, actually, this fund outperformed by ninety basis points. It's an improvement in performance. Um, as a reminder, this fund is offered as an individual fund option, where Vanguard does not have any other active, open US large cap growth fund uh in its platform. So uh overall, uh, there is some improvement in its performance for the quarter and shorter term, but it still qualifies for watch based on medium term performance. So we recommend keeping it on watch list, watch status. Um, unless any questions on this, I will also do a brief overview of Federated Hermes uh short term government bond fund. Um, and in this case, um, the uh this fund also qualifies for watch based of its medium term performance. It had some distraction, distraction to its performance for both duration management and exposures to mortgage-backed securities. Uh, this fund actually also had an improvement in its performance for the quarter, but it continues to qualify on medium term. Uh, and so we mo- uh recommend continue to keep monitor this fund and keep it on watch until Putnam transitions to JP Morgan. Um, this uh concludes my prepared comments for the watch list. I'll stop here to take any questions.
Thank you. That was very thorough. All makes sense to me. Any questions from board members? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to uh accept the Nevada prepaid tuition investment monitoring report. Um, I'm sorry, the Nevada College Savings Plan Investment Monitoring Report um for the quarter ended September thirtieth.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Move on to uh agenda number eleven for discussion and possible action. Annual marketing update and overview. Start with the State Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
Dr. Tia Mathis-Golman.
Good morning, everybody. For the record, my name is Tia Mathis-Golman, Deputy Treasurer for our College Savings Division. As you know, the Nevada Treasury went through a vigorous selection process to secure our new marketing vendors. Today, I am delighted to introduce two exceptional marketing vendors who have been integral in promoting our college savings initiatives over the last few months. Um, after the meticulous selection process, we are excited to present the Estapona Group and the Abbey Agency. Uh, these vendors have demonstrated extraordinary cap- capa- capa- These, it, these vendors have demonstrated extraordinary capabilities in their respective domains and have already made a significant contribution to our mission over just a short time. So the Estapona Group specializes in digital marketing strategies and has been responsible for designing and executing comprehensive online campaigns for the College Savings Division. Their services include social media marketing and targeted digital advertisements. They have leveraged innovative techniques to expand our reach and engagement with a diverse audience across various digital platforms. The ad- the Abbey Agency, on the other hand, brings an expertise in traditional marketing channels. They have been managing our public relations efforts, which the College Savings Division, Abbey Agency's commitment to community engagement and innovative storytelling has made this them a valuable partner in our efforts. I will now pass it over to the representatives this morning. I believe we have Kyle from the Estapona Group and Owen from the Abbey Agency. Um, they will elaborate briefly on their work in partnership with the Nevada Treasury, highlighting the specific strategies and impacts achieved through the collaboration. So, Kyle?
Perfect. For the record, Kyle Bryce Estapona Group, let me share my screen, and we will hop into some reporting. Okay, everybody should be seeing my screen now. So we pulled a quick report of the social media success that we've had over this year. Estapona Group took over the Nevada Treasury's social media starting April first, twenty twenty four. Uh, in that time, we've made great progress, as it was just called out. Some of the bigger pushes that were made during this timeframe have been executing the Women in Money campaign to generate individuals coming to that event, which turned out wonderfully, launching a brand new LinkedIn profile for the Nevada Treasury, launching the prepaid advertising tuition campaign that is running currently. And in that time period, we also produced a total of eight hundred and thirty nine social posts. That has led us to generating over one point one million total social media impressions, nineteen hundred net new social media followers. We've seen a seventy two percent increase in organic reach compared to the previous period last year and a two hundred and five percent increase in content interactions compared to the previous period. That's also resulted in a fifty eight percent increase of social media website traffic being driven back to the navigate.gov website. So we're really pleased with how those metrics have come together and what we're seeing. Some specific callouts for the Women in Money uh event. We ran a advertising campaign on Facebook and Instagram along with LinkedIn to generate awareness and ticket sales. That campaign resulted in two hundred eighty three thousand one hundred and sixty six total impressions. We saw sixty four hundred plus clicks to the event checkout page. And overall, our content, even the ads themselves, were engaged with over a hundred and twenty times organically within the platforms. That is an example of some of the ads that were run on the right-hand side. There you can see a lot of likes, shares, uh, et cetera. The Rest Easy Prepaid Tuition Campaign is currently running. So far, we've seen over seventy eight thousand impressions on these ads. Uh, so far also clicks to the navigate.gov website over twelve hundred. And one of the interesting pieces is sixty four percent of all of our content engagements at this time have been with individuals in that under thirty five year old category, which aligns really nicely with the young parent target audience that we're trying to reach with these ads and get folks set up with their college saving early and help them rest easy for the rest of their children's lives. One other piece that we pulled for this report is a twenty twenty four website traffic overview. Uh, we recently got access to the analytics here, so this is looking at all efforts driving folks to the traffic. So I can't take credit for everything that you're gonna see here. But in twenty twenty four, the navigate.gov website saw over one hundred thousand sessions. Uh, this was primarily driven through direct referral and organic search. Um, all three of those channels actually saw year-over-year growth, as outlined in the next slide that we're gonna see. I will say, when you're looking at the chart on the right, there is a decline, and this is related to one specific channel, which was paid search. Uh, in twenty twenty three, there appeared to be a bigger investment in paid search that was reduced in twenty twenty four and and ended right after Estapona Group or right before Estapona Group joined in working with this. So that single channel was driving a lot of traffic to the website last year. But uh the State Treasury just wanted to make sure that everything was being done as efficiently as possible. So that was one of the channels that was cut for twenty twenty four. Um, on our side of things, one of the channels that had the most growth was social media. So that's been up thirty eight percent year-over-year. So when we're looking January through December. Uh, and then email traffic saw a very impressive sixteen hundred percent increase. So those efforts appear to really be paying off. This is a specific breakdown of the individual channels that drove website traffic to navigate.gov. Uh, direct, obviously at the top, so you can see there's the twenty twenty four sessions versus the twenty twenty three sessions and the percentage change. So direct being very stable, referral up about seven percent. Um, I'm sure the Abbey Agency is definitely partially responsible for some of that referral traffic. Uh, organic search up sixty four percent, which is great. So that's showing that the State Treasurer's brand is out in public more, and more people are using search engines to find us. Social media up thirty eight percent, uh, paid search, you can see, as it was a channel that was pulled, is way down year-over-year. Unassigned is a channel that typically Google just, they don't exactly know where to bucket it in the other channels, but that's down eight point three percent, which is a positive overall. It means more of our traffic was identifiable and put into the correct bucket. And then you can see email traffic up sixteen hundred percent here at the bottom. And that concludes my reporting. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Estapona? Okay, great. Uh, thanks so much, Kyle. We appreciate you. Uh, and we'll turn it over to Owen.
Fantastic. Uh, Owen Truesdale, for the record, with the Abbey Agency. Uh, can everyone see my s- my screen share?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so we'll drop, drop into uh what we've been doing from the public relations side. Uh, real honor to work uh with with this organization, help promote college savings for all Nevadans um and to work with our friends at Estapona Group. Uh, so here's what we've been doing from the the public relations side. A quick overview of some of the the visual placements. Uh, and then we can dive in. Uh, some of these will look familiar as we're working on the same track that uh Kyle and his team have been on. So in April, uh, really focused on the Women in Money Financial Summit. Uh, did a uh press release on that, coordinated some media interviews resulting in four placements. In May, uh, we helped promote uh the partnership event uh around five twenty nine day with the Discovery Children's Museum. Um, that helped us uh result in more than a hundred thousand placement views uh from onsite interviews with uh Fox Five and KSNV. Uh, in July and August, we really uh ramped up our focus on the Back to School Fair at Rancho, uh, distributing press releases around that. Uh, and then in August and September, uh pivoted around to focus on the twenty twenty four art contest. Again, through all of these, we're distributing press releases, media advisories, uh, and then leveraging our direct connections with reporters to garner interest in those events, either uh, you know, driving, driving submissions to the the art contest, attendance at the back to school fairs, uh, things like that. Uh, then in kind of the last, most recent three months, uh, pivoting around to talk about the Memorial Scholarship winners and the Open Enrollment Prepaid Tuition Program. And then uh, most recently this month, uh, finalizing in- information about our art contest winners, which I believe went out, uh, I think that event's happening this evening, and that that release went out just last week. Uh, in addition to our public relations activities, we did uh support a few other uh targeted marketing efforts, including uh the the Fall two twenty twenty four newsletter, the uh Navigate physical calendar, and uh the redesign of the newsletter template to create a much more kind of visually appealing and modern look for that to to help us in- increase engagement uh to that that email newsletter as well. Just real quick, high-level summary, uh, we did six press releases, got forty three media placements with an estimated coverage views of a little over four hundred thousand. Um, and then from our our tracking software, noting uh forty four engagements on social media shares of those news articles themselves. So that's separate. So, that's separate and apart from what is happening on your own channels. But as, you know, news outlets place their news stories that were featured in, got a little bit of engagement on those as well. And that is our quick and dirty summary. Happy to answer any questions about our public relations efforts on your behalf.
Krista Van Rij from the State Treasurer's Office, standing in as the designated chair for Treasurer Konine. She stepped out momentarily. Any questions for the Abbey Agency? All right. Seeing no questions, we will turn it over to the Future Path team.
Hi there. I'm Liz Farrell. I am head of 529 Marketing at JP Morgan Asset Management. I am unable to share my screen in my corporate environment. So, I'm just going to direct you to a page, Slide 34 of the document. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to present our marketing achievements for 2024. Over the next few minutes, I'm going to share some of the key marketing highlights for the year and give a preview of marketing opportunities in 2025. So, on Page 34, you'll see our marketing strategy for Future Path is grounded in three pillars. First, demonstrating expertise. This is cross-marketing for JP Morgan Asset Management. The way we do things is leading with insights. We have a series of insights programs and college planning essentials is the cornerstone of our Education Savings Insights program. Second, we want to differentiate what makes Future Path unique, including the management of the plan by our Multi-Asset Solutions team. And lastly, of course, we're looking to drive engagement with financial advisors. So, if we go to the top of this page, College Planning Essentials. It's industry-leading. There isn't another piece out there like it. It's a guide that we publish annually and it's meant to be used by financial advisors to aid in their discussions with their clients. So, it covers the rising cost of tuition, the realities around scholarships, grants, and financial aid, and the importance of having a plan in place, and then, of course, the benefits of 529 plans. In 2024, we published the 11th Annual College Planning Essentials. And I'm really proud to say that we received recognition this year. We've received a number of accolades from the Graham Rees Institute, including Best Content Program and Best Marketing Collateral. So, as we publish our 2025 guide, I'm really happy to say we can say, call it award-winning now. In addition to College Planning Essentials, though, one of our areas of focus in 2024 was expanding our Thought Leadership articles to address hot topics in the market. And we saw a lot of success in doing that. In particular with some of the confusion around the federal aid application process, we delivered an article called "The Fast to Fallout." We also published an article on the rising costs of student loan interest rates. So, something that we saw great success in and we're looking forward to doing a bit more of that next year. Yep. Thank you so much to whoever's sharing the slide. I appreciate it. And we still are on this 2024 Highlights page. With all of the great content that we're introducing, we also launched a new LinkedIn strategy last January. So, LinkedIn for us is through the JP Morgan Asset Management handle. So, we're sharing space with a lot of other content. But this year, we posted 16 529-focused posts, which is great. We got a substantial share of voice there. The LinkedIn handle has over 550,000 advisor followers. So, in total, actually, there's a bit of an update from what I submitted in the document a few weeks ago. We saw over 107,000 impressions on our 529 posts and nearly 3,000 engagements. So, engagements being when people like, click, or share. And also, as part of our social strategy, we launched a video series called Lesson Plan 529 in September of this year, and it's something that will continue in 2025. Lastly, as far as demonstrating expertise, we worked really closely with our public relations team here. And we got quite a lot of press opportunities, in particular with our Head of Education Savings, Tricia Scarlata, who appeared on Yahoo Finance twice this year, and we had features in publications like Yahoo Finance, or I'm sorry, USA Today and Private Bank International. So, a really great year from a thought leadership standpoint and demonstrating our expertise. When it comes to differentiating Future Path 529, over the summer, we promoted the simplicity and efficiency of the plan in a campaign right around the one-year anniversary of Future Path. So, that campaign included advisor emails, web posts across both our advisor site and the Future Path 529 webpage, and LinkedIn and public relation opportunities too. We, of course, also have a number of Future Path 529 marketing materials. And I did, at the back of this, include a slide just to give an overview of what's out there for Future Path. From a financial advisor engagement standpoint, we have year-round search engine marketing in place. And in the fourth quarter, we used some targeted paid media levers to reach advisors. So, one of the things that we did was called a LinkedIn boosted post. We had a Future Path post that was on the JP Morgan Asset Management handle, but it was also served up to people that met the financial advisor profile outside of our network to extend the message and try and get people to engage. We also had a number of e-blasts through financial publications to extend the reach to financial advisors outside of our JP Morgan Asset Management universe. We host advisor webcasts on 529 twice a year, and we generally get over 1,000 advisors on the line. These events are usually featured Tricia and either a market strategist or one of our Multi-Asset Solutions specialists. The event, I think, at the end of October, featured Doug Pollak and Morgan Moriarty from our MAS team. So, we get great engagement with that. And then we do partner with key broker-dealers for in-house opportunities. So, for example, last week, Tricia Scarlata was interviewed for a radio show called UBS On Air, which is just an internal radio show that's published daily. And she was just talking about what differentiates Future Path to that audience. Lastly, a really kind of fun opportunity that we had this year was, Tricia was interviewed for a new Morningstar podcast called "The Big Picture in Practice." So, that was something we hadn't done before. It, I think, the podcast itself launched at the beginning of the year. We had, oh, I think, over 600 downloads. So, something new that we'd like to try again next year. If you go to the next slide, this is just a snapshot of how we approach planning. So, around seasonality and around college tent polls. In the first quarter, it's really all about College Planning Essentials. So, we'll publish our 2025 College Planning Essentials at the end of January, and our launch tactics will start in early February. And then, of course, we do talk about the lead-up to tax season and the opportunities for 529s there. The second quarter, we have what we consider our national holiday, 529 Day on May 29th. And also, the focus just around college commitment deadlines and graduation season. The third quarter is all about back-to-school. And the fourth quarter is quite busy with the federal aid application deadlines and year-end reminders. This year, one of the things that was a bit new too, of course, to Future Path, is we launched a JP Morgan Asset Management campaign called "Be Tax Active." And as part of that, you know, along with other products, our 529 plan was highlighted. If you go to the next slide, this is just, sorry, down two, if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, up one more. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, a snapshot of our biggest campaign of the year. So, when we launch College Planning Essentials, we really use all of the marketing levers at our disposal to promote the plan launch. So, what that includes is, I mentioned, digital events. We have a number of in-person events that our sales organization executes. We also have a dedicated email series to promote the guide with financial advisors. We have a robust social plan. So, we're using all of the levers possible to promote College Planning Essentials, again, in effort to lead with insights. And then, to close out, I just want to touch on some of the key opportunities for 2025. So, I think that the theme next year is bigger and more. So, you know, we, I mentioned, we released a handful of Thought Leadership articles this year. We want to do this bi-monthly next year, just to continue to have engagement and to have content to promote on our social channel and through email amongst the advisor audience. From a plan differentiation standpoint, so Edward Jones was onboarded in the fourth quarter. And so, we're planning a robust marketing plan to promote Future Path with that audience. We also have what I consider to be our new advisor launch kit. So, as new firms are onboarded, we'll continue to implement that, introduce them to Future Path. And then, I mentioned some of the media tactics that we utilized in the fourth quarter. I think that will become a more prominent part of our marketing strategy next year because we really have seen great results and great reach with those marketing tactics. That's all I have for marketing, in case there are any questions. But I do also just want to mention that there are a couple of slides included in the document on the Multi-Asset Solutions Quarterly Updates. And then, thank you for this marketing resources. I mentioned this at the start. This is just a reminder of the marketing resources that we have available for financial advisors and for, and clients promoting our Education Savings content and the Future Path plan.
Thank you so much, Liz. Any questions from board members? All right, perfect. We'll turn it over to the Putnam 529 Plan. Putnam, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Okay, there's probably a joke there, but let's give Putnam a moment and we'll move on to USAA 529. We'll go to that first. Anyone from Victory?
Hi, Treasurer Konine. This is Jessica Campbell with Victory.
Perfect. Jessica, go right ahead.
Happy to. Well, good morning or afternoon for some. Like I said, my name is Jessica Campbell. I'm head of Channel Marketing for Victory. I will be providing our marketing update to the board today. We also have a few other members of Victory online, Scott Kiefer to name one. In the event, we do need him. So, first, of course, I want to thank you, Treasurer Konine, the board, and staff for this opportunity to share today. I'm going to start, if we can go down a couple of slides, and thank you for sharing for me. Right there is good. I'm going to start with just a reminder of our objectives for the plan, which have not been, you know, they haven't changed over the years. We seek to provide institutional-grade investment capabilities to our individual investors along with tools and resources to help them make informed decisions about their financial future. So, if you go down to the next slide, similarly, our business and marketing goals for the year really centered around the individual. We sought to deepen relationships. We increased our presence with the military community. And of course, we sought to grow the 529 plan accounts. And as with every year, providing this easy-to-access, high-quality service and personalized touchpoints were prioritized and were a theme throughout the year. So, if we go down a couple pages, we really do feel that these objectives and goals really came to life in 2024. I'm going, I'm not going to review every tactic shown on this page, but I did want to take a moment to point out some of the highlights for 2024. And then I'll go a little bit deeper into the second half of the year, which will really kind of showcase the efforts that we've put into place for the year. So, thus far, in 2024, we've seen about 12,000 new accounts come into the plan and an average of, sorry, 18% year-over-year increase in assets since the third quarter of 2023. We also have a cross-sell opportunity of approximately 690,000 individuals within Victory Capital's direct investor platform. And nearly all of them have a military affiliation. So, we maintain a new investor journey, which you'll see on this page, designed for those who are new to Victory to learn more about education savings, ensure that they receive the right types of content, and also take advantage of the guidance that we provide, which is at no additional charge. So, that's a really great feature that we offer. We are particularly excited this year and in the past and going forward about our complex segmentation capabilities that have and will continue to allow us to target audiences with specific messaging or content. And then, just on the campaign front, in general, across our campaigns, many of them listed here, we see, you know, typical engagement rate of just over 58% from all of our targeted audiences. So, on the next page, you know, typically, we provide a quarterly update with details around our quarterly efforts. So, rather than covering every tactic displayed on this slide, I'm going to just use it to highlight a few that I think will give the board a glance into our 2024 activity and help displayed our, to display our themes of deepening existing relationships, elevating the Victory Capital brand, and being present with the individual, particularly with the military community. So, in September, we deployed the College Savings Month campaign. As with all of our larger thematic campaigns like this one, our goal is to pull every possible tactic, every, use every channel, pull every lever to get that message out there to each of our targeted audiences. So, we deployed six distinct emails in the journey, and we complemented them with a broad social campaign, features on our website, media participation, and outbound sales calls. Our call to action for this particular campaign was for 529 investors to start or increase an automatic investment plan. This stems from the fact that our research and data tells us that investors with an AIP or an automatic investment plan are really more likely to stay with a provider for the long term than those who do not have one. So, to put it into perspective, this campaign garnered over 1,500 increased or new AIPs into our plan. We also use this as an opportunity to promote the plan to select investors across our consumer business using specific segmentation criteria. And as part of that, nearly 600 new accounts can be attributed to this campaign. So, as I mentioned, getting the right content to the right audience is important to us. So, I want to take a minute to talk a little bit about our website. So, in 2024, we displayed educational content designed for new and experienced 529 investors on our website. We added a 529 tile above the fold on our homepage on vcm.com to drive traffic, as well as promotional ribbon on the 529 product page to help complement all of our campaigns. So, our, and then further, our post login pop-up platform, which I do mention or show on this page here, allowed us to reach over 230,000 unique investors, 529 and mutual fund investors, with targeted 529 messaging in 2024. So, this is just another way that we leverage the website to ensure we always have relevant targeted messages and content in-market on vcm.com. So, not now, but if you are interested in some of the content that we put out there, particularly for the military community, I did include that on slide, or Page 62 of the packet. So, if we move on to the next page, there are really two things I wanted to cover here. It's our holiday campaign and our in-person events. These are both fourth-quarter events or efforts that we had in place. And so, once again, this year, we are in-market with our holiday campaign currently, where we complement our plan with a YouGift. It's a great time of year to really encourage friends and family to contribute to 529 plans. And we find this to be a really good time and tactic to use with investors. The campaign targeted not only existing 529 investors, but also other Victory Capital investors and even broader audiences through our social channels. Historically, like I said, this has been a really good performer, bringing increased contributions through YouGift and encouraging new account opens as well. And initial results so far this year have been really strong. Also, in the fourth quarter, Victory Capital attended two Nellis Air Force Base events. This is kind of our boots-on-the-ground initiative. Both gave us the opportunity to highlight our high-quality service and maintain that personal touchpoint that we care so much about. We had great conversations and feedback at Frost Fest. We had Nevada staff onsite with us, which was great. And we found the event to be really highly engaging. This event and others have really been great for brand recognition. We intend to continue doing these types of tactics. On the next page, we talk a little bit about our partnership with the state of Nevada. This is also good as we continue to build on our presence in the Nevada. This is also uh good as we continue to build on our presence in the Nevada um with Nevada residents. We meet monthly with the marketing outreach team. We plan around upcoming events and initiatives in the state and we gather feedback. Um, in fact, on this page, you'll see um the Secure two point O Act video, the Trifold brochure, our media collaborations, which I'll touch on in the next slide. Our direct results of this partnership and the transparent feedback that we have received from um the marketing outreach team with the state. I definitely want to talk a little bit about the distinguished valor matching uh grant program, which remains an important tactic for Victory. Um, this program uh we do in partnership with the state uh with the Nevada State Treasurer and the Nevada College Savings Board um of trustees. It's one way that we really do feel we're able to give back to the military community. So um applications for the grant increased nearly three times what we saw in two thousand and twenty three. We're eager to replicate that uh growth in two thousand and twenty five. And lastly, on the distinguished valor matching grant program, we are very close to that one hundred thousand dollar market getting back through the grant program. So all really great things with our partnership with the state of Nevada. Um, and on the next slide is where we talk a little bit more about our media opportunities, which we are at, we actively pursue um for the plan. We are firm believers that the impact these media outlets, large and small, have a um great impact on the awareness of our brand. Um, recognition. So a few recent promotions to call attention to are local five twenty nine day and college savings month appearances. Where Lance Humphrey shared insights on the benefits of education savings plan. Um, and of course, the Making Sense Radio Show, where we were invited to join Treasure Conine and Dr. Tia Mathis Coleman. To talk about the distinguished valor matching grant program. Uh, this was a really great time to speak to the mil- uh the Nevada military community as the show aired during the month of the military family. So that was a uh a great thing for us to be able to participate alongside um the treasurer's office on. So if we go down, I'm gonna say maybe three slides. Yeah, we'll go here. I will wrap this up just by saying that our two thousand and twenty five marketing prep for the plan is in full swing. Our seasonal campaigns, which are listed here, all the touchpoints, the events that we intend to um participate in, our focus on the military. And doing all this and um, you know, in ways to improve with individual mind will help us continue to support our goals for the five twenty nine plan. Um, I did want to mention, we had do have a rebrand ahead of us. We're excited by the work we've already done with investors. To um elevate the Victory Capital brand and to ensure a smooth transition as we strategize and develop our plan for this. Our focus will be really on integrating with our in-market tactics and maintaining all of this good momentum um in two thousand and twenty five. So I will stop there and ask for any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Very thorough. Any questions from members? All right, we'll close that out and move on to the Wealthfront five twenty nine plan.
Hi, this is Casey Simon from Wealthfront, uh Director of Marketing. Can you guys hear me okay?
We sure can, Casey. Please carry on.
All right, um if you could just advance to the next slide, um a little bit about our overall marketing strategy at Wealthfront. We are a direct-to-consumer um investment advisor uh and broker dealer. Offering a um cash management solution and a suite of investing products. And we, our strategy is to attract new clients, mostly um, you know, knowledge worker millennials. Uh, through broad advertising in these two areas. And um particularly in the last eighteen months or so, um that that sort of broad awareness focus advertising. Has uh leaned more into our uh cash management solution because of the high yields uh available on savings. And things are shifting a bit uh more toward a sort of balanced uh look at our at our investing products, as well as our cash management solution. But um but that's what most of two thousand and twenty four has looked like. Uh, once we bring folks in through that um that uh awareness-focused advertising. Uh, we delight them with a seamless user experience and um useful product functionality that grows with their needs. Um, and then our strategy is to introduce them to additional services um and sort of expand their use case of Wealthfront over time. Um, a bit about our current brand positioning, Money Works Better here. Um, it uh sort of speaks to that that uh millennial audience who have uh high expectations for the way technology makes their lives easier. In every um, every aspect. If you want to move to the next slide, um this is just a little bit more of a breakdown of sort of what that strategy looks like across a funnel. Um, so our awareness advertising focuses on um TV commercials, podcasts, out-of-home placements. Um, we also run uh social advertising and affiliate advertising sort of into the consideration and conversion. Part of the funnel, uh we drive folks to our website for that final conversion stage. And then um have a robust lifecycle and customer engagement marketing program. Um, to introduce our clients who come to us for one, you know, point solution to their finance needs. Uh, introduce them to other products that uh that fit their use cases, including our uh our five twenty nine account. Next slide. Thank you so much to whoever's advancing slides for me. Um, just a little bit more detail on sort of our uh ad channels and what creative uh looks like when we show up in those channels. Um, but I mentioned, we have a uh a podcast advertising program um as well as affiliates. Um, affiliates are particularly important in kind of kind of later down in the funnel. Um, and are and tend to be more specific to a individual product solution. And we have uh quite a bit of live advertising on Facebook. And then our brand advertising this year has consisted mostly of out-of-home. You can see the billboard placement. Mock up in the right corner, um as well as uh TV commercials running on connected TV platforms and YouTube. Um, and again, you'll notice how creative speaks more generally to caption investing solutions. As opposed to specifically to one type of account or one solution that we offer. Um, because over the years, we found that that uh that that works better to sort of familiarize people with the brand at the awareness level. And then capture high-intent traffic um with things like affiliate placements, search marketing. Um, and uh and referral programs. I think I have one more slide just with the five twenty nine specifics. So yeah, our um, as I mentioned. Our strategy is to bring people in through the products that are sort of most broadly applicable. Which for the past two years have been, has been mostly our cash management account with um a very attractive yield and referral program. Uh, and that means that uh more than seventy-five percent of new five twenty nine accounts this year are add-on accounts. Meaning they are the second or more um or higher sort of add-on account uh of a wealth front client. Um, but for those that are coming to us directly for a five twenty nine solution, and that is the first account that they adopt. And our uh our strategy is, uh our paid and content strategy is to capture that high-intent traffic through search. So um organic search driving to uh content that we publish on our blog related to. Um, how our clients should be thinking about saving for college for their kids. Um, and uh and paid placements on Google for people looking for five twenty nine accounts. Um, and we direct all of that traffic to the webpage uh shown on the right, which we updated this year. Um, and uh and that and are see are seeing um bumps in conversion rates as a result of that redesign. I think that's the content I've got, so happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Casey. I appreciate it. Um, just to let everybody know, the governor of the state of Nevada, Joe Lombardo, has joined us today in case he has any questions. Took me just a second. We're just, we think about big things there. Oh, the uh. It is, you know, the the programs in state Nevada based on total assets, one of the largest in the country. We actually have a lot of participants buying to these programs, not from Nevada, because they are so good. They choose to give our money, uh their money to our partners. Uh, which we appreciate. Any questions from board members on uh Wealthfront? All right, hearing none, let's move on to Vanguard five twenty nine plan and your how many billions of dollars of assets? Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, two thirty seven, if we could start on that slide, please. That'd be great. Sorry. Good morning and good afternoon, everyone. Jen Walker, Senior Relationship Manager with Vanguard, covering the Vanguard five two nine plan. Um, I want to extend on behalf of Vanguard, a significant thank you to Treasurer, to staff. And to members of the board with regards to lowering the minimum last month. Um, we were very grateful that we were able to get to that point and see that go down from three thousand dollars to one thousand dollars for out-of-state residents. And for one thousand to uh five hundred dollars for in-state residents. So a very significant difference. We're seeing a nice uptick in new accounts coming in. Um, just a very brief. Um, uh stat for you, so just very brief, but the two weeks prior to lowering the minimum, we were looking at around seventeen hundred new accounts. And for the two weeks post-lowering the minimum, with the marketing plans that were in place as well. Of course, Matt's gonna talk about that in a moment, but we were hovering around three thousand new accounts. So really nice to see the change. Um, that we feel is certainly attributable partly to lowering the minimum. Nice to see. Uh, before I move it on to um that, I do want to share real quickly, you know, as we look to two thousand and twenty four, thinking about um our marketing efforts. We were focused in three main areas, which was awareness within state of Nevada. And increasing our number of accounts for the plan and also deepening engagement for existing account owners. We saw much success, the plan saw much success within two thousand and twenty four, but of course now with the lower minimum, we think two thousand and twenty five is going to look even better. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt Kurmay, Senior Marketing Manager. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jen. Um, thank you for the opportunity to quickly review um the success we had in two thousand and twenty four and our plan for two thousand and twenty five. Uh, marketing continued to play a big, important role in helping Nevadans, those across the country, uh realize the benefits of the five twenty nine. Um, and it in the adoption. Uh, last year, we focused a ton of our efforts on a couple of things that Jen mentioned. But the automated touchpoints, journeys, and using data to drive uh campaigns and targeting. Those uh efforts led to a really strong uh year from a marketing standpoint, driving over fourteen thousand new accounts into the plan. Uh, and a subsequent five hundred million dollars in contributions. Uh, so really tremendous growth. In addition to the organic growth that the Vanguard plan sees um on a given month and year. So first, we'll start on the left-hand side. These are a little bit more of the audiences that we were talking, Jen was just talking about. Uh, we're fortunate to have a a large cross-selling opportunity within Vanguard's Personal Investor uh division. Uh, we target those that are grandparents, those that have uh presence of a child in the household. Through campaigns, uh retargeting, online banners, content, et cetera. Uh, big, strong driver of the almost ninety-six hundred accounts into the plan throughout the year. The second group being that more pure prospecting side, making sure that we're visible and uh in the market helps supporting people with education and awareness. Uh, we focused uh most of our efforts in the paid space on low funnel uh areas, such as the paid search and banners. And uh enrolled nows on savingforcollege.com. Uh, we are continuing that path in into two thousand and twenty five as well. We're seeing great success there, even with some uh additional competition from some of uh the competitors in the market. And then finally, um as we think about account owners, in two thousand and twenty four, we really took a step back and thought a little bit more about how we better support the account owners. Um, with some of our other cross-selling and prospecting efforts being automated and triggered off of behaviors. It freed up some of our resources, think more about how do we help people continue to save uh for their educational goals? Whether that be through seasonal campaigns or some of the behavioral touchpoints of uh having a dormant account uh campaign on. If you haven't uh contributed in eighteen months, let's make sure we're sending you a more encouraging, a lighter touch message to get you re-engaged. We also send nudges or uh some of the behavioral touchpoints on if you're contributing, but you don't have a um automatic investment on. Let's send a message, or you have automatic investment on, but you haven't been increasing. Those are just a couple of the things that we think about in terms of helping people reach those outcomes. And then what you see on the bottom here, this value of the marketing commitment, we all want to be efficient, we all want to be driving the right outcomes. Um, you know, click rates are great, opens, et cetera. Um, but one of the things we've uh finally were able to implement was some of our universal holdout groups. So what you see on the the left side on the cross-sell, uh clearly our treated groups versus the non-treated groups seeing tremendous success in conversions. Um, we also see a similar uh set of success on the account owner's side, those that are being directly marketed to part of our campaigns. They're more likely to act, and then we're also seeing an increase in uh average contribution amount. So those give us um, you know, good, um, it's good feedback, it's things that they were doing are working. And that we'll continue to refine and learn based on some of the uh experimentation in the campaigns that we are putting into market on, um, you know, each week, each month, et cetera. On the right-hand side, we'll go through all of these, but we wanted to highlight a couple of the new things, a couple of the things that we're trying. Um, and uh again, seeing some success with. So the the first one I'll highlight is just on the top right-hand corner is just the propensity model. We have a propensity model that's been developed internally using our data, using third-party data. Um, to be able to better understand or give us a likelihood of someone converting to the Vanguard plan in the next six months. We see uh those people in higher quart- the high quartile converting at more significant rates than others. So we've developed some additional journeys and a in additional campaigns more directly tied and developed for them. And we're continuing to see the high two, three X rates of some of our other campaigns. So that use of data, the use of the machine learning and the use of models is really helping uh spur on some of the growth. The next one that I'll highlight, just around um on the the middle left, the uh text messages and mobile app notifications. Uh, people get a lot of emails and a lot of campaigns on a daily basis. We don't always have great insight into how they're responding, they're opening and engaging. Uh, but the opportunity to send texts and mobile in the moments that matter or times that matter throughout the year. Um, is proving to be something that we're testing into and learning a lot from and seeing good results. So that thirty and thirty-eight percent increase in the contributions versus the non-treated groups was from our five twenty nine day campaign. Uh, pretty seminal point of the year for five twenty nines. Um, we are again judiciously using the the amount of times we're using this. So we just sent one out last week from a tech standpoint with our fourth quarter campaign, with the mobile app push coming um in the next uh uh Friday. Um, to help spur on a year-end push, um to be contributing and thinking more about um engaging account owners. And finally, here, you just see on the uh the bottom right, more on the the national side or the general uh higher funnel side of awareness. Um, on five twenty nine day, we had a number of uh interviews in market through scripts and Investor Daily. Uh, but then also had a little bit of fun internally. Um, Vanguard allowed all crew members to wear uh college, elementary school. You know, whatever school they supported colors. Uh, and what you see is uh just a quick clip from our uh Vanguard uh social media page. Uh, showing our president Greg Davis, uh Karen Reese, who's was is a managing director for uh one of our strategy groups. And then head of uh the offer sitting from an education-saving standpoint, Smith Wolling in the middle. Um, but just a little bit of fun, trying to build awareness and a little bit of excitement around uh five twenty nines internally.
Matthew, I will, I appreciate that. I did notice that doesn't appear that anybody has a UNR or UNLV or uh. College Southern Nevada, University. So just from a, from a.
It's on the list.
Perspective. I know it's not on the agenda. I just, I wanted to throw that out there. Um, you know, just saying their states in the middle, that's all. Um, anyway, Karen.
Now, we will, uh, we we've just begun planning for five twenty nine day, two thousand and twenty five, so that's on our list. Uh, if we can go just to the next page, we'll talk a little bit, um, just high-level themes and opportunities for two thousand and twenty five. Like we mentioned, this is really a continuation of modernizing our growth engine through that personalized targeting, the journeys and the behavioral touchpoints. Uh, so the way we've broken that down this year, if you look across from left to right, really around the automation and scale again, is how do we best use our data? How do we target the people at the right times? Um, one of the things you'll see in the propensity model learnings and our planned activations is. Really a almost a two point O of the models, uh something we're internally calling hyper P, uh higher hyper-personalization. But this is an opportunity for us to take all the data points across different offers and um different data points and engagement. And make sure we're serving up the right offer at the right time for people. Uh, so something we're really excited about. The other things you'll can, we'll continue from an automated touchpoint, always on material. We want to be present. We want to be present and visible when people are coming to Vanguard.com or when they are looking at saving for college, et cetera, in the market. So we want to make sure that we're really strong in the foundational part and the automated side that allows us to then, as we move into the middle, really around that seasonal and the more targeted messages. So like many of our colleagues on the line here, right, we have the seasonal campaigns that we know are successful. We know people are interested. We want to capitalize on those. And then from our side, as we just recently lowered the minimum, it's what role does that play in one-off campaigns or the seasonal campaigns, continuing to build awareness around some of the added flexibility that and the commitment to the market from that we are expressing with that lower minimum? And then finally, on the content and tool side, knowing that again, when their people are coming to Vanguard.com, they expect tools, they expect content. We recently just launched a micro tool that we're calling, from a state tax benefit standpoint, really clarifying especially our plans, our national plan. Various states, there are plans right for them. There are plans that may have drawbacks. We want to make that really clear as we're supporting their education and the awareness about how to select the Five-Two-Nine. And then the content gaps and the addressing some of the search engine optimization, we need to continue to make sure we have the right content, updated content, reflecting the most, the current use cases, and then making sure people can find it when they're Googling or they're on Yahoo, et cetera, to make sure that they are able to come and find the right information. So we continue to be really excited about the success that we've had in the past couple of years. We're, we have a strong conviction in the path we are taking now from the automation and the data and the continuing to be visible. So we'll continue to play a big role in helping people meet their educational needs. And with that, happy to answer any questions or I'm happy to follow up, as always.
Thank you, Matthew. And obviously, the Nevada-based university shirts should be on the follow-up list. But other comments or anything else from Vanguard?
Other than thank you for the partnership, we're looking forward to another great year together. And there's thirty-eight billion dollars of assets at that plant, treasure. So it's a nice nest egg for folks to get started on their education savings. We're happy to cheer towards.
That is a ham sandwich. Okay. Do we have any questions from members on the Vanguard plan? Okay, we'll close Agenda Item Number B5 there and then move on to accept a motion to accept all of these annual marketing reports and overview, with the exception of the Putnam Five-Two-Nine Plan, which we will roll to a future meeting unless someone from Putnam has joined us. Speak now? Okay, I think they got caught up. So that would be accepting the State Treasurer's report, but also the Five-Two-Nine Partner Reports from JP Morgan Future Path Five-Two-Nine, USAA Five-Two-Nine Savings Plan, the Wealthfront Five-Two-Nine Plan, and the Vanguard Five-Two-Nine College Savings Plan. I'll take a motion to that effect.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Member Rankin. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Move on to Agenda Number Twelve for discussion and possible action, the Vanguard Presentation on the 2024 Investment Review.
Thank you. For the record, Jen Walker here. If we could please go to page two fifty in the slide deck. Thank you. Here. Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, so as we look at the investment overview, Jonathan Kaler is going to be here today by video, and he will certainly give the update. But I do want to share with regards to the glide path. As we look toward 2025, we have no recommended changes for the glide path from an investment perspective. The team, of course, is always doing due diligence to make sure that it's meeting the expectations of the account owners and the investment needs for the plan. And additionally, when we look at our simulations, the way that the plan is positioned makes good sense. You may recall that we had some changes back in July, some pretty significant changes across the plan. And so with that, we're in really good shape as we go forward. Therefore, now turning over to Jonathan Kaler, our Head of Personal Investor, Five-Two-Nine Investments. If we could move to the next slide, please. Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Jen. Again, my name is Jonathan Kaler, Head of Investments for Five-Two-Nines at Vanguard. Even though we're not recommending any changes this year, did want to briefly spend a minute or two to provide some insight into our model and our process. So on Slide Nine here, page two fifty-one in the packet, if you're following along there, we have the details of our lifecycle investing model that we use for glide path recommendations across Vanguard. So this is the same model that we use for not only the target enrollment portfolios, but also our target retirement funds, other custom applications where we're looking at goal-based solutions throughout Vanguard. So every year, we validate the inputs to that model related to investor behaviors and how we're defining the particular goal that we're targeting. We update our capital market expectations and we incorporate any new changes into the model itself. And any real significant changes across one or all of those elements could justify changes to how we're recommending the glide path be positioned. If we go to Slide Fourteen, I think it's two fifty-six, I just wanted to provide an example of what that would look like relative to changes that were considered for this year. So this slide shows the equity allocation over time along the glide path. The gray line represents the current baseline for our target enrollment portfolio. The blue line shows what a re-optimization would look like, incorporating any changes that were considered. And this is mostly reflective of changes relative to the capital market expectations this year. I won't get into too much nuance around how we do that utility function or what the output metrics are here. But we do have a threshold of ten basis points of expected annual value creation before we would recommend a change. And this year, this re-optimized path where we're just showing the equity component here, you know, a little bit different than what the current path is, but only gets us to about halfway to our threshold there. So that justifies our current positioning, that the current path is robust and sufficient. That said, we are currently working on a pretty ambitious research agenda to evaluate some more substantive changes to that model and the associated inputs. And that could put us over that threshold. So still a work in progress, but potentially more to come on that point as we continually look for opportunities to improve the plan. So with that, I'll pass it back to Jen to speak to the broader plan lineup and recommendations there.
Slide Two Fifty-Eight. Oh, thank you. Moving to Slide Two Fifty-Eight, please. Similar to the glide path, there are no recommended, no recommended changes for the standalone portfolios going into 2025 at this time as well, for similar reasoning. And with the changes that we made in July, we are in really good shape position for moving forward. And with that, back to Jonathan.
Yeah, just some additional context around how we're looking at that broader plan lineup. And if we move to, I think, Two Sixty, I think we have it marked as number eighteen. And this gives an overview of how we're thinking about the broader options in the plan. Again, as Jen mentioned, we recently made some fairly significant changes to those options that were implemented in July. So we really appreciate the partnership on that one. And that was really looking to bring the plan in closer alignment with our broader portfolio construction methodology and really rationalize the options in the plan. We look at our options across really two spectrums here. We have our, what we call our core standalone portfolios. So beyond just the glide path options, we want to have similarly-positioned static multi-asset portfolios using a similar approach to portfolio construction that would allow investors to, you know, maintain that stable risk preference over time if the glide path were not to meet their needs. They still have an all-in-one solution that's broadly diversified. Along with that, we offer what we call building block portfolios that would allow further customization if they would want to have a different expression of either broader asset allocation that's not offered elsewhere or different positioning on U.S. versus international, for example. And then over in those teal headings, how we look at the broader supplemental portfolios in the plan, looking at further customization as appropriate and based on what investors are asking for, what potential needs we see that are relevant to a education savings goal. Careful not to slice the market too broadly in those options. We don't want niche options in the plan or really options that we think might be too volatile. But we do want to provide some optionality. You know, it can be useful in case investors have preferences for a size bias, you know, for market cap, for example, duration positioning on the bond side or a preference for active in one of those segments. So looking for options, they can provide that portfolio positioning where appropriate, especially given that we know that a lot of investors are saving, not just in the Five-Two-Nine, but they're often saving for a college goal with other outside accounts. So if they have certain investments that are in a brokerage account, for example, you know, they can build around those existing investments within the Five-Two-Nine. So looking to provide appropriate optionality within reason there. As Jen mentioned, we did launch, we did remove a few options that were previously in the plan here. We added some others, those new options that were added. You know, we have seen some significant asset growth there, so investors have responded to some of that additional flexibility. You know, just for example, the FTSE Social Index option that was added to the plan as of the end of November has accumulated just over three and a half million dollars in assets since the summer. The short-term bond index option that was included is around thirty-four million in assets as of the end of November. So seeing, seeing some receptivity there. That's all I have for the investment review, but happy to answer any questions or get into additional content if there's interest.
Thanks so much, Jonathan. Any additional comments in the room? Okay, do we have any questions or comments from board members on the side? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept the Vanguard 2024 Investment Review.
Make a motion to accept.
Thank you both. We'll let itself sort out who gets credit for that one. We have a motion, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll close Agenda Item Number Thirteen, or Twelve, excuse me, and move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen for discussion and possible action, the Vanguard Five-Two-Nine Plan Proxy Vote.
Thank you, Treasurer. As described in the cover memo for this item, this relates to a proxy vote for Vanguard funds in both the Vanguard and the Wealthfront Plans. The proxy vote is for the board members who will serve on the Board of Trustees for these funds. Staff and Makita are supportive of this proposal and recommend the vote. This board, excuse me, vote in favor of the proxy vote. And then if this board approves it today, we'll work with our partners at Essensus to kind of figure out the logistics of casting the actual votes on behalf of the board. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions from board members on the side? Pretty cut and dry, I think. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, we have motion to approve. Thank you, member. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. For discussion and possible action, consent agreement to the Vanguard Five-Two-Nine Plan.
Thank you, Treasurer. So Sub-Item A of this Agenda Item relates to the changes approved during the last board meeting in November for the Vanguard Plan regarding the minimum account deposit threshold and the service levels. This amendment, or the amendment capturing those changes, also included a few other changes that staff view as immaterial to the plan's operations. Notwithstanding, staff does not have the authority to sign on behalf of the board without formal approval, so we are seeking the approval for that amendment today. And then along those same lines, under Sub-Item B, staff is requesting the authority to sign future consent agreements for the Vanguard Five-Two-Nine Plan amendments on behalf of the board that include only previously-approved items for the board and immaterial changes or only immaterial changes. Immaterial changes, from our perspective, would include things like fixing clerical errors, updating address or entity names, updating references to reflect changes in federal or state law, et cetera. And then if approved, the staff is also happy to provide an informational item at the next regularly-scheduled board meeting, should they sign on behalf of the board in the future.
Thank you. That was Dr. Kirsten Venri, as far as the record. Any questions from members? Okay, I'll take a motion to accept that item.
So moved.
All right, perfect. Thanks so much. Any discussion on the motion? I'll state, we'll probably see some others on these asking to delegate powers on immaterial items to staff, just so we don't have to bring things like this to the board, but we will handle that in another day. We have motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. For discussion and for possible action, contractual amendment for the Victory Private Label Product Agreement reflecting changes approved during the November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting and other immaterial contract changes.
Thank you, Treasurer. So this Agenda Item relates to the changes approved during the last board meeting regarding the Victory Capital Contract. This amendment memorializes those changes and also makes a handful of smaller cleanup changes, such as the updating of entity names, et cetera. I just want to shout out really quickly, thank you to the teams at Victory and Essensus for their work on this. I'm happy where we ended up. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Do any members have questions for Dr. Venri? Or Victory? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to approve that contractual amendment. Thanks to everyone for their work on the item.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a discussion on the motion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And Agenda Item Number Sixteen. For discussion and possible action, the calendar year 2025 College Savings Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. There is no presentation. There are some dates. They're on a piece of paper. I suggest reading them and checking your calendars. We don't need to approve that calendar year schedule here, or do we?
It's on the agenda as an item for approval, but...
All right, I'll take a motion to approve it, unless someone sees a problem. Chris, this is a great opportunity to commit other people to certain meetings, which I think is a lot of fun for you here today. Any discussion on the item? Of course, you can always change these in the future if something comes up. All right, I'll take a motion to approve this schedule, subject to future, you know, adjustments as necessary.
So moved.
Perfect, Chris. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Motion passes unanimously. We will close Agenda Item Sixteen, move on to Agenda Item Seventeen, our second period of public comment. Governor did say he was going to come back, say something, but he appears to have gotten distracted by the matters of state. That's reasonable. Any other public comments in the room? I don't know, maybe next year. Any public comment in Carson City? And any public comment online? All right, I'll make a brief comment, which is to thank both our internal College Savings Team, our external partners, and you all, members of the board, for taking time out of your lives to be here to create a little bit more opportunity for Nevadans and students from all around the country. So thanks for being here. Have a great holiday. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Happy Hanukkah, et cetera. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
You all.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.